Mr. Ori Hampton's here. He's going to do an invocation. And Brad Williams with the Economic Development, he's going to do a pledge of allegiance.
Keep your heads and let's pray. Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for this opportunity to gather together for the future of our county. And Lord, we thank you for our leaders here. We believe this, that every leader who is in authority has been placed there by you. So I pray that you would touch each of our leaders, help them to make decisions that are in accordance with your plan and your will. God be with this time of meeting. I pray that we, as the citizens of Coleman, Coleman County, and Lord's surrounding, that we would just commit our eyes to you and open ourselves up to whatever you have. In Jesus' name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approve the minutes of December 28th, 2021 meeting, the January 6th, 22, emergency call meeting, and the January 20th, 2022, emergency call meeting, appropriations, expenditures, personal actions, payroll requisition, improve on journal entries to be posted.
Make a motion to approve item three. If anybody's wondering about the emergency meeting, we had so many out with COVID that we put the meeting off so they could be here. But anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed or passed? Forward public comments and updates. Does anybody have any comments or updates? You can step up to the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
May I just need to state your name and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Angelo Wilkert. Thank you. We want to know what we can do or what is going on with the park. We have maybe five, 10 of us left there that do not have the money to leave, or one of them has just come home today from having heart surgery. We love that park. And, you know, if we've done something, you know, we didn't get the chance. We want to know why it wasn't, you know, brought our attention so we could come when y'all voted on it. We just, you know, if we're not trailer trash, stuff like that, we care about that park. That park is a part of my life since I was a child. I mean, we, I don't know, but with the pandemic and everything else, you know, we can't, we don't know what to do. We spoke with Jeff, Mr. Clemens, I'm sorry, and, you know, you tell me, tell them hang tight and that y'all have worked on something. We just need to know, because Monday is supposed to be the 31st. We have tried to speak with Mr. Davenport, and he has refused ever again. But, you know, we just want you to know, we do a lot there. We're not just campers. Or, you know, we had a little girl get dog bit. I mean, her parents, you know, we did, they bring firewood to need people to come up. We help them. We, we just, I guess we're like the host of the guest. I don't know. Not business. That's always hated. But the point is, we, we don't know what to do. And we're just asking y'all, please, you know, let, let us stay because we, we don't know what to do and we don't have the money to go right now. I mean, which even if I had the money, I wouldn't. But, you know, the others that's been there, they've been there. One's been there 18 years. The other has been there like nine. Seven veteran, Vietnam veteran. And then maybe I've been there over a year. Mr. Clemens had to help me last year get some stuff worked out, but I was proud that he did. Which is basically, like I said, guys, we, we, I've been in Coleman County since, and, you know, I've been here all my life. Just want to please just, just help us. It's what we, you know, what we're asking. And just give us some answers. Okay?
Do you want to let Doug, maybe if you've got anything on that, Doug?
Well, I just want to say that I wasn't going to meet with them because we, the commission has unvoted. It was going to end the long-term camping. And I told Brittany, I said, there's no need to meet, come down there with a group of campers and then be mad at me because I can't change what the commission has voted on and what we recommended. And that's why I didn't meet with you. I did come see you a time or two. Then you'll give you a letter from me, I believe. But ours, unless something changes, usually they'd die for everybody to be out that was, you know, considered long-term. And some of them just, there was no contract. They come in and stay a month. They had actually, they stayed before you know it. Like you said, somebody's been there 70 years or, I think, kid had been there 18 years. I didn't know how long he's been there. So I think there's 10, 18 years left.
Have you got anything?
We just wanted to know really why we wasn't, or it wasn't on the agenda. We was, you know, we've been checking. We keep up with what you guys are doing. You know, we care about Coleman County. And, you know, we just didn't understand why, because we, I had other things going on at the park at that time, and things with me and Mr. Davenport trying to work things, do some things. But we just, just need to know if there's anything you guys, you know, because like I said, there's maybe five, eight at the most left.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming. Get a break, Doug.
I want to start by just thanking you for being here. I'm Emily Johnston. The thing with the park is it is a public park. I grew up in Coleman County. I was a lifeguard down there way back in the day. But it is a public park. It is not intended to be a permanent place for people to reside. And it's also a place where everybody in the county should have an opportunity to use the different spots.
I disagree with you, ma'am. I'm Tim Fowler. I'll say there.
I'm just ask, please remain professional. Go ahead.
What's unprofessional standing up?
I'm sorry, I thought you were about to come over here. All right, go ahead. What, what?
Let me sit down. You feel great.
I think you're ahead.
I don't even know what I was talking about. I, I can't handle that. I mean, you, you sent me a letter. You put a letter on my camper to contact you. I contacted you, I talked to Jeff. Nobody will, it, there's a reason, it'll be found out.
I don't know, guys. I'd snowed it. We don't understand why the, you know, another thing what he was getting at is the trailers that get to stay there, they actually have the best spots, and they don't have to move every 29 days. And it's not cheap to move those things every 29 days.
You know, it's, it's a little bit different. And I have an camper sit there and somebody living there. And, you know, like, like Emily said, you know, it is a public park.
One thing also, one thing also that we run into is we receive, some of the funding that we receive is from the recreational trails program and stuff like that. And part of the requirements of those, of the funding that we receive for those parks is it's not a permanent, we can't have permanent. If you go like to Gunnersville, they may have an area that's designated for permanent, but they'll make you move after a certain period of time. So within those guidelines of some of those grants that we receive, there is stipulations that we cannot have permanent dwellings at, at the park, you know? And we had talked about and considered, but it just hadn't, we hadn't been able to devote resources to, to it right now of making an area to where if there's somebody that didn't want to stay down there, you're around, that we could designate that, but we couldn't receive any federal or, or, or state funding through our recreational trails program and stuff like that. That would, that would, a place that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect, you know?
Say, if we could help raise the money?
Well, no, it's not, it's not that. I mean, recreational trails this year is, we're putting like, what, half million dollars in OHV port through roughly?
Roughly, I don't know.
Yeah, don't have the exact number. But see, part of that requirement is, is nobody can stay down there, part of their rent requirements of that, full-time. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
And so, you know, we, we didn't base our, we didn't base our decision on, on, on just, hey, we need to make this, it also, there's things that also impact it besides us just saying, hey, we'd like it not to be a permanent dwelling place.
Well, I know that me, I caused a lot of it, and, and I'm sorry. You know, when I lost my job and unemployment, I was always on time and didn't have to go through other, you know, routes to get help.
I don't think there's any, ma'am, that's unsympathetic to.
We just got to know what we're going to do or how we're going to do because, like I said, we are disabled and it's just a lot. Like I said, the one that, heart surgery and all of that, so, thank you.
And can I, can I make one, make a point too? Being a public park, we have a lot of regulations. We have to go by and guidelines to be able to apply for these grants. And if we don't follow these guidelines and we don't, that's how we make the upgrades at Smith Lake Park, is mostly with grant money. Because, you know, we can't take money out of the general fund to spend three or four or $500,000 to upgrade because we just don't have that kind of money. So that's why we have to apply for grants. So we can't afford to lose money, you know, for the park when it comes to grants. So we have to apply by their rules.
And it also helps sustain what, what we have there, you know? And it's not, it's not, it also helps sustain. And we're, we're really not unsympathetic. We understand that there are situations, and we don't mind trying to work with every situation, but we have to have, for our park area, where the campers are at, we have to have a basis for, I mean, a guideline that, like you said, that would reflect what, reflect the things that we're supposed to reflect by some of the funding that we receive.
I've got one more question, then I'm shutting up. I promise. If we somehow, anyway, are we able to lease it and not, I mean, not live there full-time, but lease it like the rest of it? If we have to, you know, find an apartment or something, and can we lease the lot that's on?
We can't go into a lease program at all. Now, we can have, we can have, we have people that have, that leave a camper there.
And they can only stay eight days.
But they can only stay so many days.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
But it's a designated area.
But, I mean, can we not just, where the campers are, just pay for it and do the eight days a month? If, you know, we're trying to find somewhere to go? But, you know.
What is, what is the policy on that, Doug? I'm not sure.
We're limited on how many we can actually have campers that can stay there. It's called a lease, like a storage. You can basically stay like on the weekend, eight days out of the month. And, yes, eight days out of, which basically covers each weekend. But we're limited on that and all those are in a designated area.
Right, right, yeah. I knew there was some stipulation. I couldn't remember how we had to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments or updates? I want to recognize Colonel Ken Brown for being with us tonight. He does so much, so much for our veterans in Coleman County. Would you mind standing up, Colonel? Thank you so much for being here.
We veterans appreciate the commission's support throughout the year. We appreciate the financial support and also the moral support.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Colonel.
Number five, we'll move on to new business. A ratified abatement for Schultz Building Systems, Inland Southern, presented by Coleman, Alabama Economic Development Agency, in the amount of $218,396.
All right, good evening. So, yes, this is for what we in Coleman call Inland Building. It's owned by Schultz Building Systems. It's a company out of Texas. So this abatement has to be ran in their name. So this is for some expansion of the building down out on 31, as well as some new production lines, some new high-tech equipment as we move into a more automated age, even in metal welding. So this will create 50 new jobs with a total payroll of 2.5 million, so about 50,000 a job. As we said, this abatement is for over a 10-year period. It's going to save them about $218,000, but it will create a $3.35 million investment as well as those jobs.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed, passed? B, ratify North Alabama Highway Safety Office Agreement to authorize Chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, this is the current agreement for federal funding for traffic and seatbelt enforcement to help offset some of the overtime for longer persons.
Make motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed, passed? C, Resolution 2022-16, adoption of the Alabama House of Representatives' mouth and legal description by and through Act Number 2021-556.
Anybody have anything?
This is just the, the commission adopting what the state has already approved. And we're going to put the, the only one that's not going to, we're not going to ask to be approved this evening is for the congressional districts because that has been put on hold as a result of a ruling about a higher federal court.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed, passed? D, Resolution 2022-17, adoption of the Alabama State Senate District Official Mouth and Legal Descriptions by and through Act Number 2021-558.
I'll make a motion to approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? E, Resolution 2022-18, adoption of Alabama State School Board, State Board of Education District Official Mouth and Legal Descriptions by and through Act Number 2021-559.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? L, Resolution 2022-19, tax abatement for Tyson Farms Incorporated in the amount of $9,532,875.
Yes, sir. So this is, as we know, we had an incident down at the, what's called River Valley Ingredients. Most people would grow up with protein's name.
American protein.
American protein's name. So this is to rebuild the second plant, which is what burnt down. This is actually going to be on a new piece of property further away from the river. It's designed to help, you know, prevent kind of some situations we've had in the past. Right now, they run their A plant, which is fine at 100 capacity. Their B plant is maybe running on a good day of 25%. With, you know, it's burnt for the most part. You know, over 200 employees, jobs we're trying to save right now. This will be a $187,500,000 cash investment into our community, which will create over a 10-year period, $6.5 million for our schools. Will also, as I say, retain hundreds of jobs. And this will help a company that's been here a long time keep going in the community. And also, most of North Alabama and South Tennessee's chicken farmers depend on this as part of the product flow. When they had to shut down, we know we shut down 25% of the chicken plants in the southeast or some number like that. We don't have that issue. This poultry is a big part of our economy, from big plants to small farmers in our communities.
Make motion to approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? G, Resolution 2022-20, existing, one has sent sales tax for Cub and City Schools allocated to warrant repayment.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution is confirming and ratifying the levy of Coleman County's school sales tax. It was voted on back in March of 2012. It's an existing tax. It's not anything new. The city school board is just intending to have it extended. They are asking for it to secure loans for $42,790,000. And they're just asking that the tax continue to be collected and sent to the school board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? H, Resolution 2022-22, authorize Chairman to sign resolution for treatment of the standard allowance of revenue replacement from the county's American Rescue Plan Act physical recovery funds.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, this is, when the final rule came out, it allowed us to treat up to $10 million as lost revenue. And so we are making that election with this resolution, that we'll be able to use that $10 million for general government services, still subject to the uniform guidance and all the federal regulations.
Make motion to approve item A. That's a good deal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? A, Resolution 2022-24, awarded the architecture and engineering service to JMR Plus H for American Rescue Plan for the courthouse ventilation project and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is also associated with the American Rescue Plan money. We started the process for the ventilation HVAC project here that would comply with their regulations. Part of that was the federal procurement process. We did a request for qualifications that we issued. Those came back. Shane Bailey led that team to review those. And following the federal guidelines, JMR Plus H was the first pick there based on those guidelines. And so we recommend that it be awarded to them. Shane will be listed as the project manager, manager to negotiate with them, and then bring him back a contract for the commission's approval. The resolution states that if that didn't meet satisfaction, then the next would be Lathan and Associates.
Much needed.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion now. If this, this is funded, this, we can actually take, not have to take that out of the money that we moved to the general fund, right?
That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
So we could use the other, the other funds for that.
This would be funded out of the $6 million.
Right, so that'd be, that's another good deal.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? J, Consider setting public hearing for vacating a portion of County Road 630.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we've had a citizen file petition asking for a portion of County Road 630 to be vacated. It's currently not a road that's being used, and it's a place where he would like to build a home, but he's also agreed that he's going to build a turnaround to service that area as well. I'm just simply asking to have the public hearing. Can it be set for our next commission meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? K, Consider renewal of catastrophic inmate medical insurance with Hunt Insurance in the amount of $72,647.28, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the annual catastrophic inmate medical insurance renewal. Last year, it was $67,500 and some change, it's $72,000. So it's gone up this year. But we did learn that they've amended some of the policies so we can, we can add in claims cumulatively. They don't have to meet the threshold necessarily by themselves, but if one inmate has cumulative charges, we can combine those in one year to file on the insurance. And we've had several claims this year against the insurance.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve item K.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? A, Consider requests from Cub and VFW to support local veterans for financial support of $12,000 to obtain the SGB shot for PTSD therapy.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this request came from Colonel Ken Brown. And it's something that we've done in the past, and this year we needed to do this after the budget. But I've told Colonel Brown that in this next year's budget, I've added it as an allocation, as I mentioned in the work session, so that it would be, unless something changes or the funding's not there, it would be an automatic type of.
Make motion to approve, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I want to make a statement. I think Ken can kind of give us another date on how many local veterans lives this saves.
Yes, sir. We, we know for a fact over the last two years of the program that, that we prevented 12 suicides here in the local, local area in Coleman County. And we've changed a lot of lives. We've sent over 200 guys and gals that are combat veterans for the shot. We started out having to take them up to Annapolis, Maryland. Now we found a couple of doctors in Birmingham, so we're not having to shlep them up there anymore. And it's worked out really well. We've asked Congress to mandate that the VA pay for this. Nothing's happening in Congress, as you all know, because of the gridlock up there. We, Senator Gudger has gone to the legislature and gotten some money for this program, but it's for a statewide effort and not just for Coleman County. So we are still having to take care of our own here. And until the congressional support comes through, and we all pray that it does, we're going to have to take care of our own.
Thank you, Ken. We appreciate what you do for all the local veterans here. Thank you.
Yeah, and it is amazing, amazing of the high percentage of our combat veterans that suffer.
Yes.
Sometimes post-traumatic stress. Yep.
Make a motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? M, Consider purchase of two 95 PTO tractors, Massey Ferguson's from state beat at $63,495 each, for a total of $126,991 for the road department and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, these tractors are actually stripped down to where they're only specified for right-of-way bowling. Hence the price on these. I do recommend the purchase of these tractors.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed, passed? M, Consider purchase of two Land Pride PTO road mowers from Source Whale Concordees at $38,321.32 each, for a total of $76,462.64 for the road department and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we currently are using three of these exact models and definitely recommend the purchase of these, these two mowers.
Thank you.
Make motion to approve item M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? O, Consider authorization for swamp jemins to use the south parking lot of the courthouse on February 28th, 2022, and March 24th, 2022, from 3:30 PM to 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion. Who, who was it exactly that was fundraising? Yeah, fundraising, yeah. I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed, passed? P, Consider raising the dollar limit of the annual fireworks show from not to exceed $25,000 to not exceed $32,000 due to the increased shipping cost. This is subject to bid and approval by the commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we talked to a couple of different ones, and everyone indicated there's going to be approximately a 30% price increase. And so that's really where I'm asking for an additional. And so that's really where we're asking for additional fee. And, you know, so far and in years past, we've always, you know, paid for the fireworks out of the mission through the, through the gate fee that we charge right now. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Have you got the firework date set for Smith Lake Park?
It's the 4th of July with alternate dates on July 11.
Thank you so much.
Uh, make a motion, let's see, is that me?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve item, P, P, excuse me, I was figuring it out. Is that a 20% increase?
He said 30.
Okay, 30% increase, okay.
Yeah, he said that's what about approximately what they did.
Yeah, I see, yeah, yeah.
I'll say anything, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to make sure my numbers were patched and there. Sorry about that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Q, Authorize payment of annual CRS liability insurance premium in the amount of $429,806.06.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is the annual liability insurance payment and renewal. We went through this last year and we've removed, there were some things that needed to be removed. We've done a lot of work to scrub this list. So this is a 4% increase over last year. But that compared to the other insurance, most of our insurance went up 5% on veterans. So hopefully we kept it from going up as much by the end of the year.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item Q.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. R, Authorize the chairman to sign the land and water conservation fund and recreation trails program contract agreement for Stony Lomson OHV Park.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, these R, S, and T, all three have to do with Stony Lomson OHV Park for the upcoming grants that we're getting. This one is an agreement with the land water conservation fund for the recreational trails program. And the next two are professional service agreements with NRCO for that grant.
I'll make motion to approve item R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. A, Authorize the chairman to sign the Recreation Trails Program Contract to Professional Service Project 21-RT-55-01 for Stony Lomson OHV Park.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item S.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. T, Authorize the chairman to sign the Recreation Trails Program Contract to Professional Service Project 21-RT-55-02 for Stony Lomson OHV Park.
Boy, they had to have a lot of them in there, didn't they?
It's all we separated, remember?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right.
For the equipment with you.
That's right. Yep, yep, okay. Yeah, make a motion to approve item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. U, Authorize the chairman to sign contract with Lemus Brother Circles to perform at the Ag Center February the 4th, 2022 through February the 6th, 2022.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, I believe this is the only thing we have up there. We asked to get a contract due to the being a circus, but last six years, we've been no issues up there. And so it'd have been a free day to be, I believe it's February the 4th through the 6th.
Thank you, Doug.
I know some clowns are probably not here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. V, Authorize appropriations of $4,000 to Coleman Elk's Veterans Day Committee from Tourism Fund to support tourism efforts.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, this is an additional appropriation request. We, we have an appropriation of $8,000 for that, for that project from tourism. This would be an additional appropriation and an ongoing request to, to raise that to 12,000. So as we discussed in the work session, we will go ahead and add that 12,000 as an appropriation annually, subject to approval by the commission each year.
Yeah, this is a, this, this program's grown every year, Colonel. That's a big present.
Go ahead, go ahead, Colonel.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, the, the idea behind this, this range, everything's going up, but the objective of the veteran state program is to attract as many people to this event as we possibly can. It's good for economic development, of course. That's the, the upside in addition to good for our veterans. But the other thing is that when, when we are forced to have it at Veterans Park because of the runway construction or other things, we don't draw as big a crowd. If you can get, if you give folks some shiny objects like B-17s and P-51 Mustangs and things, air shows and skydiving and all that, helicopter rides, that brings folks out. And of course, that's the objective of the day. And with the fuel costs going up, get vintage airplanes in here and so on, we need that increase.
We know that's gonna be a great event. We're looking forward to it.
Also, we're gonna try to make it.
Make motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. W, Proposal plant Bronco Estate subdivision, a minor subdivision containing seven lots located on County Road 1718.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the preliminary plan does meet our current subdivision regulations. I do recommend approval of this plan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item W.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. X, Award bid number 1372 to shoulder works material installed to Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this will provide us an option to use contracted forces, land of former short on our county courses, to flex the shoulders of U.S. law paid rules. Kind of do recommend the approval of this bid.
Make a motion to approve item X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Number six, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 at 4:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Number seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Number eight, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Meeting adjourned.